Push my button now. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting, December 1st, 2016. And the first thing on the agenda is, of course, Mr. Krupp to check and see if we're all here.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. We have today a very lengthy agenda to...
Yeah, right.
We are joined this morning from the county council's office by Mr. Chris Story and, as always, our clerk to the board, Mary Rathke. Commissioner Bernard?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Chair Ludlow.
Here. Commissioner Schrader's on a trade mission. Would you all please rise and join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have a presentation first. Mr. Krupp?
Yes, we have a presentation of the Tourism Development Grant Awards for 2016-17 and also recognition of awards given to tourism staff and programs. And our Director of Tourism and Cultural Affairs, Danielle Cowan, will introduce the staff members and the program.
No, you don't have to do anything.
Good morning, commissioners. Oops. Good morning, commissioners. Danielle Cowan, I'm the Executive Director for Tourism in the County. And with me today is Aaron Leersman, and he's our Development Specialist, along with Jared Lyman, who is our Social Media Specialist. So, welcome to them. Today, we wanted to give you some information about the 2016-17 grants that we have just awarded through the development program. This year, we were able to award about $50,000 more than what we did the previous year because our revenues have been so strong. We had projected 4.2, and we just got our final numbers, and it has actually been 4.5. So, we've done pretty well. And I'm going to turn it over to Aaron, who was one of the key persons involved with running the development grant program this year. And he will give the details about the various awards.
All right, so we'll start with the first slide there. Like Danielle just said, we actually increased the funding this year by $50,000 because of the TRT increase, which we kind of felt, or the TDC felt that that was integral into actually reinvesting that back into the tourism community. The limits as far as what is allowed with the tourism development grants, you have a maximum ask of $100,000. You can do a minimum of $5,000. We try to support all three pillars of tourism. So, that's the agritourism, outdoor recreation, and arts, culture, and heritage. And then eligible groups, you have your public, private, and nonprofit organizations are all eligible to apply for the grant. So, the first one there at the top, we awarded $20,000 to the Museum of the Oregon Territory Moot for their genealogy research lab. This was one that kind of excited us because it actually created a new tourism asset. And it was also something, if you read back on the Clackamas County Heritage and Cultural Tourism Development Strategic Plan, they did identify genealogy tourism as a ripe opportunity for tourism in the county. So, when they came to us with this ask, it was almost a no-brainer for us. So, we were very pleased to award them that. Below that, the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Market Research Strategic Plan and Implementation Plan. They were awarded $60,000. This is already a state heritage area, but we're also currently being reviewed for designation as a national heritage area. This is going to fund the assessment of tourism assets within the heritage area and evaluate the economic opportunities that could benefit communities and citizens within the area, as well as develop a strategic plan for capitalizing on those tourism opportunities. You want the next slide? So, at the very top there, the Sandy Ridge Trailhead Improvements. Over the past years, we've noticed that parking has become an issue there as it increases in popularity. A lot of people, not only in-state but out-of-state, are starting to recognize that as one of the major trailhead areas for mountain biking. So, the BLM approached us for a major project. They were awarded $80,000. This is going to be used for trailhead improvements to the Sandy Ridge Trail system. It's going to increase capacity for parking. I think they're going to increase by about 180 parking spaces. They're going to add event space there. We got record of them from this past year. They've already had about, I think, 35 events at that place. So, this is going to increase that. It's going to give them an actual space to do that at. And let's see here. Yeah, so it's basically a huge multifaceted project, and it's just going to increase and bring more availability to people, again, not only in-state but out-of-state as well to use this. Below that, the Canby Bike Hub, where they were awarded $12,000. This was by the Canby Livability Coalition. This is going to, the funds that we're going to donate for them or grant them is for a covered bicycle hub. They're also going to put in a bike fix-it station, concrete padding, informational kiosk. This is going to be a part of a larger plan to promote bicycle tourism in Canby. The bicycle hub is near the Canby Ferry, which is a popular attraction for cyclists visiting the area as well. Next slide. So, the next award is bike-friendly amenities for the Willamette Street in West Lynn. They were awarded $5,000. West Lynn's Historic Willamette Main Street, they received those funds to install bike racks on Willamette Street that add to the character of the historic Willamette District as part of a larger vision for encouraging cycle tourism in the area. Below that, you'll see river tourism at Willamette Falls. We Love Clean Rivers was granted $40,000. That's actually going to be used to answer technical questions that must be addressed for a water or portage trail to be incorporated near Willamette Falls. Currently, they are working with Metro to define those technical questions concerning the portage trail. Next up, we have the Rodeo Walk of Fame in Malala. They were awarded $12,000. The Rodeo Walk of Fame, where'd it go? Oh, it's at the bottom. This was the Malala Area Chamber of Commerce. They received the funds to expand their rodeo walk of fame. This builds on Malala's rodeo heritage and the reputation of the Malala Buckaroo. The city of Malala incorporated this walk of fame bronze plaques to the main street, which improvements on the main street are currently underway. Below that, we have the Clackamas Cultural Plan. This was granted to the Clackamas County Cultural Coalition in the amount of $20,000. This was going to be for hiring a professional consultant to guide for public outreach and engagement process that will inform the updating of the cultural plan for Clackamas County. This was something we felt was needed. The last time they actually did a feasibility study was 12 years ago, so they were definitely due.
Oh, wow.
Is there a slide after that?
I believe that that was it. This was an effort that was undertaken by a panel that worked with us from outside partners and citizens, as well as staff, and then was approved by the Tourism Development Council at their November meeting. So, if there are any questions, we'll, aren't any questions, we'll move on. Next. Thank you, Aaron. So, the other thing we wanted to do is just acknowledge some of the efforts of the staff at tourism. And I also wanted to point out one that was recently awarded to and hasn't been yet received by partners, by Partner End of the Oregon Trail, which isn't on here. We have recent notice from, by Media America, as 100 best fan favorite in Oregon out of 9,000 applicants in Oregon for that designation. Our own End of the Oregon Trail was awarded one of Oregon's 100 bests. So, congratulations to them. The one that we wanted to acknowledge today was an award received this past August from the U.S. Travel Association in Florida. It was one for the effort by Jared Lyman and staff for Bigfoot's Dream Date. It was, ESTO is the National Organization for Travel, and congratulations. It was a big effort. Social media is important to us and important to the industry, and I'm so proud that we have a team that just outshines everyone in that area and in many areas. So, congratulations to Jared and his team for pulling that together. And the other one was also given to Jared in October, and that was for the Travel and Tourism Research Alliance. This is a global organization, and he was recognized also, coincidentally, in Florida, where they held their national conference this year. And it's the J. Desmond's Lottery Professional Marketing Award, which is an extreme honor and, again, very proud and as the county should be for the effort by Jared and staff for achieving this remarkable goal. So, congratulations, Jared. And then two others we just wanted to mention as well came forward from our public relations. And for those of you who don't know, public relations, we often call earned or free media. It's a place where if you work with the media, you hope to get a story or a placement. And often, it's something you can't ever afford to buy, certainly not with our budget. And so, you can see the revenues that that generated. The PR program under Annie Austin was recognized for two gold awards by, again, a national organization. And you can see the difference in her, for the value added from the circulation and the ad value itself from 14, 15 to 16, 15, 16, and the impression. So, this is a remarkable achievement. Through her work, we have $6.7 million in value in advertising, which is truly amazing. So, again, just wanted to recognize those efforts. And one other one, through a lot of effort, again, by Annie Austin and her travels and working with media, had this amazing placement in L.A. Travel Magazine, which is almost impossible. We certainly could not have purchased it, but this is the main spread, and it really hones in on all we have to offer here in Oregon's Mount Hood Territory. And you can see the beautiful picture there of Villa Catalana, one of our favorite wineries just outside of the Canby, Oregon City area. So, basically, that's it, and thank you very much for the opportunity to share this with you today.
Thank you, gentlemen. Why don't you come up here? I think we have somebody to take a photo. Yeah, we do. Commissioners, let's go down. I want to be with that bird.
Let me take that off, too, Dylan.
County for tourism, what an outstanding promotion it has been. And Clackamas County certainly has the majority of Mount Hood from the tri-county area, at least. And it is a great destination, certainly recreational opportunities abound. All right, we have now citizens' communication. We have one card. Mr. Lespool.
Well, it's good news for tourism. And I grew up in Oregon, and I'm definitely an Oregon tourist. I was reminded that my mountain bike's been hanging up in the garage for too long. I wanted to just mention a couple of things today about, some retrospect about the election, and not personal candidates or who won, but about the issues. Because whether you like what I say or not, I'm here about the issues. You don't hear me down here talking about my backyard or the neighbor's fence. I'm down here because of the issues. So, when I look at the election, I look at the issues, and one of the biggest ones was Measure 97. And 2/3 of the folks said no to a sales tax. And let's face it, no matter how you packaged it, you know, we had 40-plus million dollars go into that battle. And it was basically to find out that, yeah, we're fiscally in trouble in a lot of ways, but a sales tax isn't going to fly in Oregon. And I say that here because you folks have to deal with that reality in Salem. And I truly believe that some of the campaigns, regardless of which ones I could go research, if you look at some of the campaigns, you'll see folks had trouble getting money because there was this huge, huge investment, not only in Measure 97, but in a couple other big races. So, here we are with the same problem we had before we had this Measure 97 issue. And I believe that, you know, like I'm from Gladstone, we had a marijuana tax. We had a county marijuana tax. We had, you know, and I think folks overlook stuff, and I think sometimes when it comes to the lesser issues, they don't vote for them. They've said no to 97. They feel overtaxed. So, here we are, moving into next year, and the Commission is going to inherit the same problem we've had with roads and with trying to manage money. And I just hope that something can be done about the road situation. I don't fault the Commission for where we're at. I was troubled by the lack of attention to roads before Lynn Peterson even got here. And now, we've got this sign that's still in the back of the room that we still have to address. So, as always, I appreciate the opportunity to talk, and I'm looking forward to providing whatever input I can as the new year arises. Thank you.
Thank you, Les. All right, Mr. Krupp, we have a board discussion item.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is a consideration of a resolution that would adopt the expansion for the North Urban Clackamas County Enterprise Zone. Cindy Hagan from our Business and Economic Development Program is here to present this to you.
It doesn't, okay. It's already on. Oh, thank you. Good morning, commissioners. Again, my name is Cindy Hagan. I'm with your Business and Economic Development Team here at the county and am also the Enterprise Zone Manager for the North Urban Clackamas County Enterprise Zone. So, we are here today with a resolution to expand the current urban, excuse me, the current North Clackamas Urban Clackamas County Enterprise Zone, and it will also include the areas in the city of Milwaukee and properties in Happy Valley and unincorporated Clackamas County as well. The zone has been in place since 1997 and was expanded in 2008 to include Happy Valley. And again, this enterprise zone is a tax abatement opportunity for new investment for industrial and traded sector businesses within the zone. So, thus promoting new investments in the county and is one of our few business retention, expansion, and recruitment tools that we have in our quiver, if you will, for the daily work that we do. So, with me today, I also have representatives from the city of Milwaukee and Happy Valley should there be any questions on this item. Thank you.
I'm going to ask you a question that I asked also when we talked about this in a policy session, and that is, in this particular area, evidently, there's going to be an urban renewal district as well. So, in some of this area that's covered by this enterprise zone. So, I suppose it might depend on what comes first, the chicken or the eggs, so to speak, whether it's urban renewal district placed, put in place, or the enterprise zone. Are you familiar with both of those in this situation, and which one will come first?
I am, and we had Barb Cartmell, the Director of Development and Transportation, that was also with us at the policy session. And so, the way that this would roll out is the enterprise zone would benefit the business owner for the tax abatement, and then the urban renewal benefits then the property owner in that scenario.
And some of them may be the same.
Correct. Yes, correct. That is correct.
Yeah, I think what we ended up determining was urban renewal, if all things were equal, came first, so to speak. Is that correct?
That is my understanding.
Okay. Has that urban renewal district been formed and put into place yet, or is it still in preliminary stages? You don't know that?
My understanding is still in preliminary stages.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Good enough. All right, Mr. Bernard, Commissioner Bernard?
So, I am abstaining from this because according to the map, I own some property in this area.
All right. So, clarifications or questions, Commissioner? All right, motion, please.
I move we approve the resolution for the expansion of the North Urban Clackamas County Enterprise Zone.
All right, motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Savis. Further discussion? And for those who are curious about this, yes, I think it was Tuesday. Not sure which Tuesday, but we definitely have discussed this. If you want to know more about this particular program, then listen in on that session. It's on a Tuesday. It's called a policy session, and it gets more in-depth than what we're going to go through today. So, any further discussion? Are we ready for the question? Mary.
Commissioner Bernard?
I'm not voting on this one.
Abstain, abstain would be nice.
Abstain. Abstain. Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Passes three, actually zero, because he said he wouldn't vote. So, an abstain doesn't count in that particular situation. All right. Thank you, Cindy. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Now, this is a rare situation, and the only time I've ever seen it since I've been here in four years. We have no consent agenda. I feel like robbed. Mary's not going to read it into the record this time, right? So, we will not, but we always have, and we must have, of course, the county administrator update.
I certainly do, and I've got a couple of items to share with you, of course. We received another compliment for one of our staffers in transportation and development. Jody, who's a resident of Clackamas County, took the time earlier this week to call our Building Codes Division and express her appreciation for excellent customer service that she received. She was reporting that Kathy Crutchfield, who is one of our permit specialists, provided her with outstanding customer service and was kind, nice, and extremely helpful. So, I wanted to thank Jody for sharing that with us and also offer a big thanks to Kathy for demonstrating our core values of spirit and professionalism with our customers. And then, let's see, I had thought I saw Greg Geist in the audience a little earlier, but I'll mention this other item. Our Tri-City Wastewater Treatment Facility is one of a few throughout Oregon that has been selected for continued participation in the Energy Trust of Oregon's Strategic Energy Management Program. This program trains staff to make our operations more efficient, to reduce costs, and ease the demand on systems that serve our customers. And as of the middle of November, these efforts have saved more than 1.1 million kilowatts this year. As a result, we're expecting, and I can't quite tell you how much, but we are expecting that Energy Trust will present a check to our Water and Environment Services Department for its energy savings sometime in January. That means we get paid for reducing our energy costs. So, keep it up, Greg and the West staff. Very appreciative of that. And that's what I have to share with you.
All right. Thank you. And time for commissioners' communication. We'll start with Commissioner Bernard.
So, last night, I attended the joint city discussion on Tri-Cities and CCSD-1 forming a new district called Wes, and it's a 190. I thought staff was absolutely outstanding, that it was so obvious to me that not only the savings that would occur through that partnership, but the very low rate increase that would be required to fund the project was very well demonstrated. And I think that even though there were some cities who originally fought the idea, it looks like there, it's a go. And what will come now is a discussion on governance, frankly, and that would probably be of a type of an advisory committee, whatever. We're just starting to look at that. But I thought it was a very well-done meeting, and staff did an outstanding job. We are moving into the budget process. We had a quarterly meeting, some updates on our revenues, and they're substantial, but there are also substantial increases in costs, one of those being PERS. Others are just the, you know, the cost of doing business has risen. So, in the end, we have a pretty flat budget and not a lot of room to do a lot of things. And I think Les mentioned that we still, we failed on the gas tax increase, and we need to have a discussion about what we're going to do about that because, frankly, we can't just let it go. People in Clackamas County evidently think their roads are a lot better than they really are, but it just need to do a little more driving around. You'll find out that's not necessarily true. And it's about life and safety, too. So, I think we need to talk about, you know, what we're going to do about that. And we're not talking about building new roads, even though we need new roads. We're talking about maintaining the assets we have. So, that'll be a discussion that we have with the community in the future, and there are other options we'll be considering. So, with that, I'm going to move on to Paprika. So, Paprika is one of the dogs in our dog shelter. She's a senior pit bull mix that is just as sweet as can be. She's been patiently waiting for a perfect family to adopt her and knows that they are coming soon. She loves to go for walks and be by your side at all times. She may be senior by definition, but this gal still has a lot of pep. She's recommended to be placed in a house with children over six years old. So, be sure and stop by and visit her at our Clackamas County Dog Services Shelter. You can visit them on the web at www.clackamas.us/dogs, or call 503-655-8628. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Well, thank you. You know, I've talked a lot about it from my farm life, and we, seems like we finished one harvest and we're on to another. We're in the middle of Christmas tree harvest now, and we've had trucks on the farm loading them out, and it's a hustle and bustle. And so, that's what we're doing now, and we're transporting them to all sections of the United States, except really for the East Coast. And so, I'm busy doing that lately. And I'd like to honor, out in Colton, you know, Colton is a, you know, it's not even a city. It's a place in rural Clackamas County. The people guard their independence fiercely, and, but, you know, it's a great school district. And the school district has had its challenges, but the people who are teachers and administrators there are so dedicated to their students out here. I just want to honor Brennan Olson. He's back taking, he graduated from Colton several years ago, and he is now a West Point graduate. And, you know, it's one thing to even get nominated to go to one of our military academies. It's quite another thing to be a graduate with high honors. And so, I want to honor Brennan Olson, and thank you for his service to our country. And we expect very good things. Olson, and thank you for his service to our country, and I, we expect very good things. To be moving away, he had high SAT scores, SAT scores, and he was in their civil engineering program, and I'm sure as he grows into public life and civil life, he'll be a great asset to this country, and thank you for the people of Colton for raising really great kids.
Thank you. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I think last week I mentioned my trip to Seattle for transportation purposes to look at what they have done to increase transportation funding to solve congestion problems. And last week, I forgot to mention that we cut the ribbon on the Tolbert Overpass, which is the last project that really completes the Sunrise Project. So, I want to take this time to thank our staff and ODOT and our Commissioners for supporting this project, and past Commissioners as well, because it took quite a lift to get this project underway. Though it is just Phase 1, and there are several phases to go, it was, again, a great day to cut the ribbon on that. And I had to just think about how many projects, some of the projects we have done recently. Part of that project was completing, rebuilding Lawn Field Avenue. We built Minuteman Way, and we built a lot of projects around that area to make this, to facilitate the new routing for the Sunrise Project. We opened up Monterey last year, and that connects 82nd Avenue around the town center to Fuller Road, and we've done considerable amount of sidewalk projects in Happy Valley and Gladstone and a lot of areas around the county. So, despite, you know, some of the limits of transportation funding, we have managed to do a few projects, and I know we also have paved quite a bit of roads and fixed a lot of road surfaces in the last couple of years or so. I want to applaud staff for finding their resources, and also, again, thank my Commissioners for supporting some extra monies to make that happen and turn that into a reality. And that's what I have for today.
Wow. This may be a world's record here. Well, I, too, attended that meeting last night. It's an unusual meeting, if you think about it, because our staff, our very able staff at Wes, has, had been making the rounds and visiting every city that's involved in CCSD-1, Clackamas County Service District Number 1 Sewer, as well as tri-cities, and they were able to meet with every city except for Oregon City. And Oregon City has said, let's just wait until after the election. Why? I do not know. However, last night was after the election, and instead of Oregon City getting their first presentation, it was all three of the cities, which was fine. It was very educational and had some good Q and A going on there. But the question of governance came up last night yet again, and if you think about this, again, it's 30 years ago, this commission was given the authority over tri-city sewerage district. There was a reason for that. The story's been told many times. This area was in trouble sewer-wise. Now, we believe that the commission, long before I was here, made some very strategic and good investments, as well as, as CCSD-1, to the tune of $93 million in that plant. There are some who say, well, that plant is totally owned by the tri-city sewerage district. Well, not quite so, and thus the partnership which we formed several weeks ago, a new ORS-190 that would ensure the continuation of this partnership. Now, there are those who would want to break that partnership up and put it asunder simply because of a power grab, because, as I've said before, and I'll continue to say during my term here, is there should be two things shown if a change of governance is needed. One, that whoever would take over the new governance could ensure the same rates that we could in continuing our operation the way it's going. And the second one is that somehow we have failed in anything. Now, there's always personnel situations, you know, director was let go from Wes, and that seemed to be a great move, because look who we've got now, fantastic, outstanding man, award-winning man named Greg Geist, who did a real good job there last night, again, listening to questions and answering them. So, I would hope that any discussion of governance would look at other parts of the country, let alone the state of Oregon, as to their successes in combining processes instead of separating them. If you look at the Washington County model, that was 11 different sewerage districts that all came together. Ultimately, the county Commissioners still have control, although there is a 15-member advisory body that's made up of cities and ratepayers. I think we all get lost in the fact that we serve ratepayers. We don't serve other elected officials. We serve the people who actually try to flush that and make it go away, and that's the way it should be. But I want to emphasize that if there's any change of governance, there better be a darn good reason of it besides just a flat power grab, and that's what's going on right now. So, one of the things, I always finish on something that I found on the internet otherwise, and I thought this one was totally appropriate. Over 130 police officers died in this calendar year so far. Not one was given the Presidential Medal of Freedom Award last week. Now, that's reprehensible. You know, we just heard about one dying last night, and a lot of these people are assassinated. They're not killed in line of duty, they're assassinated. And, you know, where is the outcry, by the way, from our president saying, stop the rioting in the streets? Stop this stuff? Stop killing our cops? And they're killing black ones, too, by golly. You know, where is the outrage? It is sad, indeed. But it's a happy day otherwise, and I'm going to make it so. I expect you'd do the same. There may be no further business before us this day. This meeting is adjourned.